Welcome to our School Board Candidate Forum on Educational Equity and Access, prioritizing all students, including those with disabilities. On behalf of the Palo Alto Council of PTAs, the Parent Advocates for Student Success PAC, the Latino Parent Network, and Palo Alto CAC for Special Education, we welcome our five candidates and all audiences. In alphabetical order, candidates are Rowena Chu, Nicole Chu Wang, Chris Colon, Allison Kami, and Josh Saltman. Tonight's forum is part of their voter service, bringing impartial information to the public. The five candidates are running for the Palo Alto School Board, where three of the five seats are up for the November 5th general election. We are joined by two student moderators, Chris and Karthy, from the Pally Speech and Debate Teams. The moderators will walk you through the guidelines and present all today's questions. We are recording this event and offering Spanish and Mandarin translation. If you like a translation, please click the global icon at the bottom of the screen. In preparation for this event, we sent out notices via PTAE News and CAC Parent List and on the website. Questions for the candidates were gathered in advance from the co-sponsors and community members. Please note that whenever this recording is aired, it must be shown in its entirety to ensure that no candidate's statements are used out of context, as all candidates have agreed to this condition. I now pass the mic to our student moderators. Let's get started.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. A few reminders before we get started. The event is a forum, not a debate. There will be no rebuttals and personal attacks are not permitted. We've asked the candidates to keep their feeds on mute when not speaking, and if they go over time in their answer, their audio will be muted. Time limits will be strictly enforced with timers. We'll start with 90 seconds of opening statements, followed by three advanced questions, also 90 seconds. The next series of questions were not presented beforehand, and we'll have 90 seconds for the first set. For our last set of questions, we'll have 60 seconds to answer, followed by 60 seconds for closing statements. Candidates will be called on in random order for statements and questions, and the closing statements will be given in the reverse order of the opening statements. Candidates, please begin with your opening statement in the following order, starting with Mr. Colohan, Ms. Chu, Mr. Saltzman, Ms. Chuang, and Ms. Kami. You have 90 seconds, beginning with Mr. Colohan.
Hi there. My name's Chris Colohan, and I'm running for Palo Alto School Board. And eight years ago, I left a successful career as an engineering manager at Google to become a stay-at-home dad for our kids. And at that time, I dove into our schools and tried to help out as much as I can in every single way. I became a PTA leader. I was on PTA boards for the past seven years in a bunch of roles, including five years at two different schools, serving as a treasurer, where I got a reputation as being the guy who could make a budget presentation exciting and fun. I also had bad timing. I got elected to be a PTA co-president at Duvernix five days before they shut down the schools for the pandemic. So that was an exciting journey. I got to learn a lot from parents, what they really cared deeply about for their kids, and also some of their anxieties along the way. I would get dressed up as Dovey the Dragon and dance around for the kids, not just because it's fun. And also, two and a half years ago, every parent in the district got an email begging them to please sign up to be a substitute teacher, so that, you know, because they had a shortage of subs. And I actually answered that call. I became a sub two and a half years ago. And I've taught, probably taught some of your kids. I've taught in every grade in the district from K through 12 in 17 different schools in the district. The 12 elementary schools, the three middle schools, and two of the three high schools, because there were only two high schools for the past two years until this year. And so I bring all of this experience as a parent, as a... Oh, and I'm out of time.
Next, we'll have Ms. Chu.
Good evening. I'm Rowena Chu, and I'm running for Palo Alto School Board. I'd like to start by thanking our host committee and also to those of you listening at home for your civic engagement. I have four children through the school district. I have two children at Aloney Elementary School, whereas PTA president for the last two years. My children there are in first grade and fourth grade. And then I have older children at JLS and a ninth grader who was at Pally last year and has moved on to Middle College this year. For the three years before I was PTA president at Aloney, I was board president of the JLS Connections Program, where my second daughter is now in seventh grade. I'm running on a platform of every child must grow. My belief is that the district should meet the needs of all children within it, whether they are struggling students, whether they wish to academically accelerate, whether they have special needs, and whether or not they are facing a mental health crisis. As well as that top priority, I also run on a platform of mental health. As a suicide survivor and a sexual assault survivor, I have direct experience of a mental health crisis that I have worked, striven over decades, to overcome. These days, I am a youth advocate for youth mental health services, and I hope to bring some of this to the district. Additionally, I have a priority around special education. I got started in local politics as an advocate against the closure of Aloney Room 19. Thank you.
Mr. Saltzman.
Hi, I'm Josh Saltzman, and I'm running to be a trustee of the Palo Alto School District because I believe every student deserves an opportunity to thrive. I grew up in Baltimore, but my wife grew up on the Stanford campus and went to Nixon and Gunn. We met in college on the East Coast, and 10 years ago, we moved here so our kids could go to the same school she did. We have three kids with very different needs. A 10th grader at Gunn and an eighth grader at Synapse, who will start at Gunn next year, and a third grader at Nixon. Before we had kids, I earned degrees in biology from Princeton and design from Pratt. And after a career in product design and founding two education technology startups, I was taking a career break when our youngest, Jack, was diagnosed with hearing loss. At that point, I became a full-time parent to support him. Jack was subsequently diagnosed with autism, and over the last six years, I've learned and experienced so much as his caregiver. I've also been a class parent, PTA board member twice, and a site council member. I know my way around a classroom and a budget spreadsheet. And thanks to my experience in design and business, I've learned how to look at things from many perspectives, build consensus, and solve problems creatively. My priorities include promoting both excellence and equity, building a culture of trust and transparency, and making sure our students feel safe, supported, and included. Thank you.
Ms. Chuang.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Chu Wang, and I'm running for Palo Alto School Board because I have a preschooler who's four years old that goes to preschool in the district at Preschool Family, which is located at Greendale, run by the adult school, which also makes me a student in the district, learning about child development. I also have a first grader in Mandarin Immersion at Aloney, and I'm also executive director of Dreamcatchers, which is an educational equity nonprofit that provides an enrichment program as well as support and resources to socio-economically disadvantaged middle school students in PAUSD, almost 200, and their families, and also provide sustained year-over-year service learning opportunities for... I used to say almost 200. As of this week, we're at 205 PAUSD high school students that come and mentor and learn service learning with us. I double majored in college in Women's Studies and Asian American Studies and learned about systemic inequities, which, to be clear, the opportunity gap is not just along racial, ethnic, or financial lines. It is also experienced by our other marginalized students, our sped students, our neurodiverse students. And when I was in college, I volunteered in classrooms. I went into high schools in predominantly Hispanic, Latino, Santa Ana, and saw the opportunity gap for 10th graders that weren't reading at grade level. And I worked with graduate students to develop a curriculum that went out to 2,000 high school students. I tutored in Fountain Valley, predominantly via American nonprofits, to work with middle schoolers because I saw the opportunity gap. I'm passionate about equity. Thank you.
Ms. Kami.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us and hosting us tonight. I'm Allison Kami. I'm very excited to be running for Palo Alto School Board. I do immigrants' rights policy by day, and through that work, have learned that all change is local, and that's why I'm running to serve our students, our families, our communities. I'm here first and foremost as an engaged parent. I have a daughter at Green Middle School, so I've been in the district for a long time. I first moved here in 1999. And I have a son in kindergarten at Escondido, so looking at another 13 years in the district. I volunteered in a lot of different ways at the site, room parent for years. Also, at the district level, I served on an ad hoc school board committee on childcare a couple of years ago, where I worked to expand aftercare options for low-income, special-needs, English-as-a-second language, unhoused, and foster care youth. I also cofounded a position on gun violence prevention at the Palo Alto PTA Council, where we've been doing parent education throughout the district. I'm also an experienced attorney. I started out early in my career representing youth here in Santa Clara County. And through that work, being a child's attorney means you represent them not just in their family court case, not just in their guardianship case, not just in their deportation case, but also in their IEP in school and in anti-bullying issues. So I have three priorities. One is academic opportunities for all, helping struggling students and challenging advanced kids. Another is safety broadly defined, and third is trust and transparency.
Thank you all for your opening statements. We will now start with the advanced questions. Our first candidate will be Ms. Chu. The first question is, "What specific actions would you take to address racial epithets targeting Black or African-American students in PAUSD, including involving students in preventing such behavior? And how would you ensure transparency in tracking and resolving these incidents?" I believe you're on mute.
Thank you for your question. In terms of how would I prevent racist epithets in school, I think first of all, I would say that I would take this extremely seriously as somebody who was bullied racially throughout all of my primary and secondary education. I think that one of the very first things that the school district must do is offer anti-racism training at all levels to teachers in elementary, middle, and high, and students in elementary, middle, and high. It's often said to me in the work that I do around anti-racism that children of a very young age are too young to understand, but they are not too young to understand bullying and difference. And so I feel that anti-racism education can be offered through all levels at the district. I feel that we could normalize conversations around racism. It seems to be, it is, of course, a very triggering word that is difficult to bring into conversations that causes people to be defensive. And I think that in normalizing conversations, I mean that can we bring the heat down about this issue? Can we talk about how to create inclusive and safe spaces where we can be human beings to one another and that we can heal some of the divisions within our community? So to change the language and culture around which this topic is spoken of. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Mr. Colohan.
So there are two parts to your question. To the first part, we already have a number of programs in our schools, which I would support fully. And also, if we come up with new programs, sounds great. We have our Unity Day programs that work at the elementary level to try and teach our kids to be more understanding of each other. We have the Challenge Day program, where we hear a lot of stories from students about the things they've experienced. And we also have the new Ethnic Studies program, which we're rolling out right now at the high school level. All three of those are great. And yet, still, as I'm talking to folks, I hear a lot of stories of some horrible racism that's happening in our district. And I have to admit, as a six-foot-tall white guy with gray hair, I'm in a privileged position, and so it's important that I listen as much as possible to really understand other people's experiences. On the reporting and feedback issue, well, what we currently have is we have a full-time staff member named Robert Andrade, who has a stellar reputation for trying to gather data for addressing any reports that he receives. And there actually are... There is a uniform mechanism for reporting racism. And one of the things we have to do is encourage folks to do that reporting. It's called UCP. But more importantly, from the board level, how do we encourage and track this? Well, we already have a district SWIFT plan. And in that SWIFT plan, for this year, we have goals which address both reporting requirements and also what we do in response to that racism. And so if we follow that SWIFT plan, in June, the newly-elected board will be addressing that and trying to track how we're doing and set new goals for next year, which will help drive our administration in the right direction.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Kami.
I'll start by talking about actions I've already taken. There were some children in my daughter's class at Escondido last year who used racial epithets. As a room parent, last year, we discussed how to make sure the children knew just how serious and offensive these words were to their classmates. Already this year, in sixth grade at Green, we've had some children using racial slurs on several different group chats. I and other parents have tried to make impacted families feel safer and supported and shut down those group chats where this is happening. I speak to my daughter and her peers regularly about the seriousness of these actions and how they can be better upstandards if they hear or witness such language. I grew up in Memphis, Tennessee, as one of only a handful of white children in an otherwise all-African-American school. My peers were Black. Most of my teachers were Black. Unlike many other white kids living in the United States, I did not grow up unaware of the privilege of my skin color. We talked about race every day. This has informed every bit of who I am and what I do. Unsurprisingly, I work at a racial justice immigrants' rights nonprofit. We do policy through a racial justice lens with a special emphasis on combating anti-blackness. I think we need to have many more of these conversations in our school. Specifically, we need to have speakers come and talk to our classes about their experiences. We need to not caven Black history to one month. We need to do group exercises like the Color Line. We need to talk about the legacies of slavery. We need to do things like recognize October as a Hate Crimes Awareness Month. One of my campaign priorities is safety. If kids do not feel safe and like they belong in our classrooms, they cannot learn and they cannot thrive.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Saltzman.
Safety and making sure that students feel supported and included is a major priority of mine. And I think a really big part of this is ensuring that students understand the impact of their words and actions on other students. This is something that we start in the elementary schools and something that we need to continue up through middle school and high school. And the problem gets more complicated because then more of the communication and social interaction between students occurs outside of the view of teachers and classroom aides and parents. And so that's when it becomes even more important that we have set the foundation with our students to recognize language that will be offensive or hurtful. And that includes racial epithets that target communities, whether it's Black and African-American students, or Latino students, or Jewish students, or Muslim students, any particular group. So I think it's really important, as I said, that we make sure that we're training our kids to understand what's appropriate behavior and what is not. As far as mechanisms for reporting and tracking, I think it's really important that we put an emphasis on using these incidents as learning opportunities. If we instead focus on penalizing students, I think we'll have a harder time getting students to report incidents. And so I think that's something we should focus on as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Ms. Chuang.
We have racial slur incidents happening at all levels of our school district, in high school, middle school, and elementary. I personally have been involved with addressing incidents that are happening in our middle schools. And I think there are two primary components. The first is education and prevention, and that is things like ethnic studies and age-appropriate ethnic studies in middle school and elementary school, as well as presentations by people in the school community that can talk about their lived experiences. There's a great example of one that last year's principal at Green did about his experience as a man of color, and that was very well-received and personal to the students. That second way, we need to think about it, is our response. And we need to have a better, more immediate, more holistic response, and a response that isn't reactive but is rather embedded in our culture. We need to shift away from punitive policies to restorative practices where it focuses the students that had the encounter and brings them together to have restorative conversations. We need to be implementing, as I'm proud that there are some teachers doing this, of their own accord at Fletcher, doing community talking circles on a regular basis, so that when things come up like this, they have a place and a space and a normative practice around talking about these issues with the whole class, because it's not just about the students that were involved in that specific incident. The whole school finds out about it. We need to have clear and transparent communication with our parents as soon as possible after it happens, so that they know how it's being addressed, that it is being addressed and taken very seriously, and the plans for us to move forward together.
Thank you. We will be moving on to the next advanced question. This one will start with Mr. Saltzman. The next question is, "California Education Code Section 56049 requires districts and schools to reflect the needs of all students, including those with disabilities, and their fiscal and programmatic planning, recognizing them as general education students first. It also prioritizes inclusion in general education settings and mandates data transparency for improvement. How would you ensure that the district and schools meet these requirements? What specific steps would you take to promote transparency and accountability in addressing equity goals? Please describe your approach using either the Local Control and Accountability Plan, the LCAP, or School Improvement Plans, SIPs." Again, we'll start with Mr. Saltzman.
Thanks so much for including this question. This is super important, obviously something near and dear to my heart. I think that the first thing we have to do is make sure that we set this as a priority at the board level. And I think that that's something that hopefully the next board will take up as a priority. Once we set this as one of our priorities and establish metrics that we can use to measure our progress in this direction, I think we'll start to see more progress in this area. And I think that there's a couple of different facets to this. The first is understanding how we can make all of our learning environments more accessible to students with a wide range of different disabilities and different needs. That includes not just neurodiversity, but also physical disabilities of various types. So I'm very encouraged by the focus that our district has started to have on universal design for learning, because I think that that is something that can really help our students with special needs, but also help all of our students. And I think that solutions that we can find that raise the, that sort of improve learning conditions for everybody are the best solutions out there. And so I think this is something that we're going to need to look at each school individually, make sure that we're partnering with our teachers, with our administrators, and with our parents and students to find solutions that will serve everybody.
Thank you. We will now move on to Ms. Kami.
Thank you. So I would approach this the way that I would approach all decisions on the board, which would be data-based decision-making. And 30 years of evidence-based research shows that inclusive practices increase academic achievement, increase graduation rates, social, emotional, and behavioral health, and employment prospects for students with disabilities. And we've seen that states that have increased inclusion and least restrictive environment rates over the last decade have seen parallel increases in the academic achievement of their students with disabilities. So this has always been the law under federal IDA, Individuals with Disabilities Act, but California had made almost no progress, and that's why we had SB 692, which was passed to prioritize inclusion. So what specific steps would I take? I would encourage our school improvement plans to address inclusion specifically as a part of each of the goals. It should be not just a part of literacy, but also a part of equity and excellence, also a part of mental health, also a part of attendance, also a part of serving and celebrating others. It's something that we can be talking about as we talk about every other goal and every other aspect of education in our district. I would also track inclusion data, both as time series, so tracking students in the aggregate over time, as well as comparisons between grade levels, look at comparisons between schools and between districts to the extent possible to figure out where we're making progress, where do we still need more information, and then make sure that we're able to help support teachers and aides in inclusion's efforts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Colohan.
So this question's asking about LCAP and school improvement plans. And I've read over a number of LCAP and school improvement plans. And what I have, one of the concerns I have is effectively they're shelfware. They're often written and not read by very many people. And so then I'm like, okay, if that's the case, what do we have in our district that's actually driving improvement in this area? And because when I read over the LCAP plans, some of them actually did specifically reference inclusion fractions and have that data in there. But I've not heard many people talk about having read them and tell us about how this is changing over time. And so when I was looking at where does our district drive this? Well, I opened up the Palo Alto Promise. And the Palo Alto Promise document, if you read through it, actually talks about the inclusion percentages and how those change over time. And then I went to our SWIFT plan, and it was that this year's board actually has set specific goals in the SWIFT plan around inclusion. And if I read from it here, what it says, "Expand the special education continuum to meet the adverse student needs in the least restrictive environment, e.g. co-teaching intensive programs and resources." And so what I would do as a board member is I would make sure that we use these tools that are in place to drive change, to make sure that it doesn't just have a vague promise, but actually specific goals in these plans about how much inclusion we want and how much we need, based on conversations with our teachers about what goals would be best and generate the best outcomes for our students. Because when it comes down to it, the purpose of inclusion is to help our students.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Chuang.
When it comes to this specific question, while I could talk about school improvement plans, and I certainly think that anytime we're looking at the data in a school improvement plan, we should be looking at groups that have been historically marginalized and specifically special ed students. Anytime we're looking at suspension rates as well, that every time we're looking at rates across student groups, we should be looking at special ed students and as well as the overlap and the intersectional identities amongst the special ed community to see where the trends are and how we're doing and to have transparency about the students that are being affected negatively. But what I'd like to focus on is how I think the goals we set for inclusion right now are not true inclusion. I'm grateful that we have these goals, but when you start to dig in to understand what it feels like to be a special ed student in our general ed classrooms, then you realize that the goals we have for inclusion will only begin to scratch the surface. They're about providing access to education, but they're not about creating an environment in which these students truly feel valued for being who they are. Rather, they're about how to modify the student that comes in to make them fit into the spaces that we already have existing, or how to make sure that the educational curriculum we have can be modified to fit for that student. But what we need to be doing is strength-based IEPs and strength-based modifications, where we're focusing on how the student thrives and talking to them in that way, in an empowering way. We also need to be focused on how we can modify our classrooms to make them feel welcome.
Thank you. Finally, Ms. Chu.
Thank you for this question. When we speak about ed code 56049, we're often talking about a balance between the time spent in a general ed classroom for a child with an IEP versus pullouts or time spent in their moderate or severe or mild to moderate centers, in learning centers, I mean. I would say that the balance, the appropriate balance for every child is very different. And I would like to see the district consult more with parents and with special ed specialists to determine balance of this time to make it different at elementary, middle, and high school levels, with the understanding that neurodiversity is frequently a very wide spectrum, with special ed kids requiring different things on an academic basis and on a physical disability basis. I would say that in order to achieve full inclusion, we need to think about returning to the design of curriculum and classrooms to center around the needs, which currently center around the needs of neurotypical kids, to reimagine those, to center around the needs of neurodiverse kids. I would like to encourage a redesign along the basis of neurodiverse kids having different needs with regards to their academic needs, their emotional needs, and their physical needs, and that we cannot take a view of the special ed community as a monolith, but instead, every child comes into the classroom with a different profile. Thank you.
Thank you all for your responses. We're moving on to advanced question number three. This one will start with Ms. Chuang. The question is, "Given the California Dashboard data showing that PAUSD students perform at 80.6 points above standard in math, but students with disabilities perform at 49.4 points below standard, socio-economically disadvantaged students perform 32.7 points below standard, African-American students 33.6 points below standards, and Pacific Islander students performing 37.1 points below standard, what do you see as the priority with respect to math, especially in a context where some students and parents are seeking more challenging math courses beyond PAUSD's current path pathway?" Again, we'll start with Ms. Chuang for this question.
I am very clear that we need to raise the floor before we raise the ceiling.
I am very clear that we need to raise the floor before we raise the ceiling, especially if there are opportunities above what we provide, to provide those accelerated courses that are free and accessible. For example, taking multivariable calculus at foothill. I understand it's not ideal. I understand it might be online. I understand that there are conflicts that arise outside of school time and choices that need to be made and prioritizations. That is life. And for those students, I'm grateful that that opportunity exists. If there are problems with access, we should address those. And so then, having that be addressed, I would definitely focus on things that raise rising tides that raise all boats, and particularly focused on the students that are not meeting standards. That is exactly what the nonprofit that I lead was designed to do, was help close that opportunity gap. That is defining the numbers that are the opportunity gap that we see experienced. And that is only slightly indicative of their experience, because those are just numbers. Those don't take into account all the other factors that affect how they succeed academically. Things like whether they feel welcome and included and and the small biases that they experience every day, unconscious biases. So I would definitely focus on programs like the Every Student Reads Initiative, rolling something out similar to that with regards to math. We've got Avid. We have many different supports, but really, we need to work with our teachers to address it within the classroom so that we don't need as many after-school initiatives to try to address these things.
Thank you. We will now move on to Mr. Saltzman.
To me, the question seems to imply that this is a zero-sum game, and I just don't believe that that's the case. And one of the reasons why I say that is because, on the one hand, we're talking about advanced academic opportunities at the high school level. But when we talk about why so many of our students are struggling, it's not at the high school level that the problems are being created. The problems stem from issues at the elementary and middle school level. And so one example I would give is related to the way that the school district has chosen to de-lane math at the middle school level, which is a decision I think was made for good reasons. And I definitely am a huge supporter of making sure that students are given goals that are both achievable, but also that stretch them, you know, and and I don't want people to get stuck in a lane that that prevents them from achieving their their best. But right now, we have a situation where students are struggling and we don't have the correct supports in place. And we also aren't doing a good job of making sure that they have a strong foundation going into the middle school level. So we need to strengthen what we're doing at the elementary school level, perhaps taking a page from the Every Student Reads Initiative playbook and focusing on math. But I think we also need to think about how we support our teachers in classrooms at the middle school level, who are now trying to teach to a much broader range of students and making sure that we're serving every student in those classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Chu.
I think the data is undeniable in the sense that it reflects the fact that we are a high-performing district that is really failing our students that are the most vulnerable and most in need. I am also a supporter of appropriate academic placement, which also means that we need to provide appropriate academic placement for our students that are struggling. For me, this involves being intellectually honest about which students are struggling and providing specific support for those students, whether they need I think in the first instance, it would be to give specific strength to math specialists and reading specialists to offer greater and direct support to that. But in a bigger picture sense, ideology-wise, I think that part of being intellectually honest about struggling students is not to disguise that struggle by, say, removing lower grades, Ds and Fs, not to to be honest about the percentage of eighth graders that are failing algebra, to be honest about the percentage of elementary kids that leave without knowing very basic math building blocks, such as multiplication tables and long division. And so in order to do that, there needs to be a greater transparency. We need to address better which students are succeeding, which students are struggling, and and change our direction specifically to support those that struggle the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Camai.
Thank you. And so one of my campaign priorities is academic opportunities for all. And as part of this, we need to make sure that we are supporting our students, our many students, as as in the question, who are performing below standard. We are a well-resourced district. We can and should do better. So with math in particular, I think we need to be offering early resources for elementary school kids. We need to be better at identifying folks who are struggling or or are just barely at standard and maybe likely to struggle. I've represented immigrant, low-income immigrant youth in our county, and I know the different obstacles that many youth have faced. I know the trauma that some have suffered, and that affects every bit of how some students experience what happens within the school bell. We need to be providing more push-in services as opposed to pull-out and think really creatively about how to support our teachers in turn in supporting our kids, similarly supporting our classroom aides and other staff in supporting our kids. In middle school, I've been really pleased to experience as a parent the benefits of the flex period and to learn more about its history. And I think we could be doing a better job of using this period to provide even more math support and thinking creatively about how to use it in other ways. I want to make a couple of other points. I don't think that math is the only place that our many of our kids need help. And so we need to think about how we are prioritizing other areas, academic areas, socio-emotional as well, where some struggling kids could could use more support. And I do not see this as conflicting with the advanced pathways we already do and should offer other students. I think having equitable access and transparency regarding our services and pathways helps everybody.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Kohlhaan.
I'm so happy to hear that there's a lot of support for one of the things which was one of my basic campaign priorities, which is improving our elementary school math programs. And the reason for this is I've been doing a fair bit of substitute teaching, including substitute teaching middle school math, where I've seen we do have a problem there, which is a very wide spectrum of capabilities in our students and a very wide spectrum of baseline knowledge that our students have. I've encountered students who were trying to take eighth-grade algebra, who don't know their times tables, which makes it really hard to learn skills like factoring. And so what I've been advocating for and continue to advocate for is that we should do something like the Every Student Reads Initiative at the elementary level. And I want to explain what that is. Every Student Reads Initiative was the board set a priority saying, we need to improve the number of students that are reading at grade level in our elementary schools. And then they delegated to the teacher, saying, please come back to us with techniques that we could apply. Where should we apply our resources to get the biggest bang for our buck? And I think that's the same kind of approach we need to take for math, which is the board should be setting priorities. We should be saying, here's our goal. Right now, we have nineteen percent of our fifth-grade students are not at grade level as they graduate. Fifty-one percent of our socioeconomically disadvantaged students are not at grade level. We should set some goals. We should say, let's get that down by, say, I don't know, five, ten, fifty percent. Let's come up with a reasonable goal after consulting with our teachers and then ask them, what are the best things we can do to try and help improve this?
Thank you, candidates. For the next block of questions, you will again have ninety seconds to answer. And we will begin the first question with Ms. Camai. Question one, the district has invested in behavior support improvements, including a short-term committee for enhancing elementary support in twenty twenty-three and those recommendations. However, some families, especially those of young children with disabilities, have raised concerns about behavior interventions and limited communication around incident reporting. How would you ensure the district addresses those concerns, particularly for young children who may struggle with emotional regulation or communicating their needs? Ms. Camai.
Thank you. So this goes to one of my campaign priorities, which is about community and transparency. So making sure that our families understand what that policy is and why it was implemented and how exactly incidents are being handled. So as a parent, I have witnessed the that many times when folks report stuff, they don't actually know what happens with that data. And again, one of my other campaign priorities is safety, which includes anti-bullying. And so I think being really clear about what data, what information that we're allowed to share with folks. And just because we're not sharing information does not mean that that behavior is not being addressed. I also think that we need to be doing more, that's a lot about kind of reactive. But I think we could be doing even more on the preventative side, too, about bringing our families together and making sure that students understand the expectations of how to treat one another. We're still kind of coming out of COVID, during which a lot of students lost a lot of socio-emotional learning. And how do we address that, right? And we're all learning as a society how to kind of make up for some of that lost time and thinking through how best to address different behaviors in the in the classroom. So I think this comes back to transparency, comes back to making database decisions about how we are going to address behavioral issues. And it comes back to to setting community norms about how we expect kids to behave and knowing that kids are still kids. And then we have mechanisms in place for for folks where there are behavior incidents. Thanks.
Mr. Kohlhaan.
So I have to admit, this is an area where I don't have a lot of expertise. As a substitute teacher, I know that there are a lot of staff on campus who have what's called safety care training, which is what gives them permission to intervene when a student gets dysregulated to the point where you need to actually physically intervene in order to keep the kid safe. But ideally, we should never get to the point where that's needed. And so the real question comes down to, how do we train our staff in order to make sure that they're able to help when kids become, lose some of their emotional regulation? How do we collect that data? And quite frankly, to drive that from the board level, I think what we need is we need to have management who's focusing on this issue, who has expertise in this issue and is driving improvements. And so as a manager, I'd be driving, I'd be asking Yolanda Conway, hey, are you taking care of this? Are you delegating this to someone on your team? Making sure that we have the correct procedures for both data collection and also making sure that data is communicated effectively to parents so that they're able to respond and and help help participate in their child's education.
Thank you. Ms. Chu.
When I joined preschool family in two thousand and nine, I was part of a long-running inclusion classroom that had that had a very successful program that had already been going for about a decade. And so I had the opportunity, as a parent who worked in that classroom, I had the opportunity to observe where inclusion classrooms worked very well. And I would say that what worked well in that instance was a clear and transparent system of communication between the teacher, the special ed aide in that classroom, and the parent, who in many examples of the special needs kids within that classroom, were working in partnership with one another as a team to ensure both that student's safety and this and this safety of other students that shared that classroom space. In talking recently to special ed families within the district, I feel that a lot of that groundwork that was laid for that clear and transparent communication has gone away. And so I hear deep concerns as the questions stem raises about behavior interventions, in particular about the high rate of suspensions and punitive measures on children of a young age of who have special needs, who may not be able to regulate their behavior, both due to their special needs and due to their young age, a combination of their special needs and due to their young age. I would consider that a lot of compassion would need to be applied in this situation. I do believe that punitive measures rather than constructive behavioral measures are counterproductive for children at this young age. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Ms. Chu Wong.
First, I want to make two things clear. We are so fortunate to have so many behavioral aides in our district and the vast majority, all the ones that I've ever interacted with, which is many because I am also a parent, a work parent, and preschool family, where my classroom or my child's classroom is right next door to the special ed preschool classroom run through the district. And I have seen the tireless work and true dedication and and love and support poured out by our aides. And so I want to make it clear that the vast majority of our aides are really truly phenomenal humans that want to support our students. And my main concern is ensuring that they have the training and the resources and the time and proper communication about the best techniques to use with those children. I also think we need to be educating parents about what behavior looks can look like and emotional dysregulation can look like. Because the other thing I want to make clear is that emotional dysregulation at the early years happens across the board, not just with special ed students. And so we all need to have a level of compassion and understanding. I, as part of preschool family, I do parent education, run through the adult school. And the teacher in that special ed classroom came into our very first night class this year and spoke about what it looks like to be an aide working with these students and what we should expect and the ways we would be expected to respond as parents that are also working in the classroom alongside them. And so we need to expand initiatives like that and make sure we're properly supporting our aides so they can properly support our students.
Thank you. Mr. Saltzman.
So my son, Jack, has gone through speech therapy, occupational therapy. He's had behavioral therapy using ABA as the primary technique. I've received PRT training, which is a form of ABA therapy. And he also has a full-time aide who supports him in a general ed classroom. And one of the things that has become incredibly clear to me through all of this is that when all of the different folks that are helping to support Jack are all on the same page and understand what the goals are, what the issues are that might arise, what are the things that might cause him to become dysregulated, what kinds of calm-down strategies work best for him and which ones don't necessarily work for him, our overall level of success just goes way up. And so I think it's really important that we think about ways, you know, to strengthen the ties between school and home so that our teachers, our classroom aides, our parents can all be part of a collaborative team that are working together to support our students with special needs, especially around some of these behavioral issues. So, you know, in our case, we have a daily report that comes home that lets us know if there have been any incidents that doesn't necessarily apply to all kids, but having some mechanism for communicating that, I think, is very important and something that should be encouraged in all of our classrooms. Thank you.
For the next question, we'll begin with Ms. Chu. Senate Bill nine three nine requires that teachers in middle and high school receive information on supporting neurodiverse students, such as those with autism, ADHD, and dyslexia. It also requires that we improve safe learning environments and connections with supportive adults and communities. As a board member, how would you ensure that our schools effectively implement these requirements and foster a sense of belonging for students who need it? Ms. Chu.
Thank you for this question. As a child, as a parent of a child who has a five oh four for ADD and ADHD, I'm more than familiar with the difficulties of integrating her into her school community and also the challenges with making her feel safe and accepted at school. I would say that a lot of what the challenges that she has faced have been due to a lack of understanding of the different profiles that kids on the spectrum with these sorts of needs may present. And I think that some education is beginning to happen in terms of children of different ages and different academic needs and different genders presenting very differently, whether they're on the autism spectrum or the ADHD spectrum, and indeed in terms of dyslexia. So let me speak more closely to that. I would say that often, girls with autism, ADHD, and/or dyslexia mask better than boys with autism and ADHD and dyslexia. And that means that within my own special ed community of parents, I've seen examples of parents with girls who mask having to advocate much more avidly because the the special need presents itself very differently. So I would say that this is a problem within our school district, certainly, but also in our wider community. So I'd like to see the issue of better education around this, information around this, and also in partnership with the community at large so that we can understand these students better. Thank you.
Ms. Chu Wong.
I think I addressed some of this when I spoke about what I believe true inclusion looks like and the way that we should be modifying our classroom to work for all of our students. And in fact, how in so doing, we would actually benefit many students because we don't know that we are catching all of the students that could use extra support in this way or modified learning environments. And so I believe that by modifying our spaces to be truly inclusive, in which we're welcoming students in as they are and for who they are, it will benefit all of our students. That's things like ensuring we're taking brain breaks, allowing students to get up, having fidgeters, things, all these things that are perhaps low-hanging fruit and rather easy to implement. As it relates to that question, which is, how as a board member would I ensure that our schools are effectively implementing the requirements? I think that is governance, and that is where you set goals and you require schools to report on stated goals. And we could look at how we could measure them and set smart achievable goals that grow each year to ensure that we are creating spaces where our students feel a sense of belonging. and set um smart achievable goals um that grow each year to ensure that we are creating spaces where our students feel a sense of belonging.
Thank you. Mr. Kohan.
So to build on what Nicole just said, um in addition to being a governance issue and setting goals, it's also a compliance issue since this is a new law. And so we'd have to monitor the uh not only achieving of of goals and aspirations, but also that we're actually compliant with the law. And so I think that's a pretty routine task for a board member to do. And uh so we'll just have to make sure we do our job when it comes to that. Um in terms of where we're at in this, I'm actually, my understanding is that we already have an effort underway to set up specific neurodiverse classrooms in an attempt to actually uh improve this issue for children with autism, ADHD and dyslexia. Um I have to admit, I've only aware of its existence. I'm not aware of the details at this time, but it's something which um I'm going to look into and try and uh learn more about as as our staff and teachers develop this new exciting program, which I think is something that's long needed because um we have a lot of neurodiverse students in our in our school community. I've encountered them when I'm teaching and um it's helpful to try and structure lessons in order to accommodate their needs.
Mr. Saltzman.
Um I'm grateful for this bill, um first of all, because uh you know, my son who's currently in third grade, he will eventually be in middle school and high school and um you know, whereas elementary school, uh he has a one-on-one aide who's with him pretty much throughout the day. That may not be the case um as he gets into the middle school and high school level. And so um the issues change in my view, um and the environment uh potentially becomes less sort of warm and fuzzy and welcoming and um therefore, the importance of him feeling like he's included in the environment um and that his teachers are aware of uh the issues, the challenges that he faces, um I think becomes critical. So uh I I do think it's extremely important that we have ways um to measure whether we're succeeding here. One of the things that we're going to need to do, especially if we're trying to foster a sense of belonging for our students, is make sure that we're getting feedback from our students. Um you know, it's one thing to um to just look at test scores or other things like that, but we're going to need to make sure that we have ways of accessing information about how our students actually feel. Um and that is going to require getting direct feedback from our students, but also probably uh getting feedback from parents, um especially for students who may not be able to communicate clearly with us uh about how they're feeling. So I think it's going to be complicated, um but it's a really important issue for us to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kema.
So I think bills like this can be very helpful to serve as a hook. Um so I'll give an example that's tangential, which there was a bill passed um that required all school districts to provide information as of July first, twenty twenty-three um about our safe storage laws in California. So how to secure firearms. Um I and a fellow parent used that as a hook to go in and say the district already is required to provide information. Let's then provide robust community education about this topic. I think similarly here, if we're already required, teachers are already required to be getting some information. We could use this as a hook to build off of the information that they're receiving and do that in a couple of different ways. Um I think that we could uh not just provide that information to teachers, but really build it into some of our professional growth opportunities. I think we could partner. We're very lucky in this uh community to have a lot of different services and experts around here. Um many of which I I've worked with in the past um and would be really excited to use those partnerships to help our teachers uh learn even more about how to support um students. I also think that we could be doing more community education um uh with parents to figure out how to sustain that at home. And I think that um as was said, to really get input back from those who are affected to learn how best um to be providing further information and services um to those who need it. Uh I also noticed it says seven through twelve here, and I think we should be thinking about that um earlier uh as well. So using this bill as a hook to provide more robust information and services throughout. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question, we will start with Mr. Kohan. The Every Student Reads Initiative, or ESRI, focuses on lower elementary grades literacy with key progress indicators tracking progress for all student groups. However, literacy development should be a priority at all grade levels. As a board member, how would you promote literacy development in high schools and ensure that students who struggle with reading and writing at grade level receive the support they need? What strategies would you propose to help high school students improve their literacy skills? We'll start with Mr. Kohan.
So ESRI has actually been um surprisingly successful. Uh and the way it's been successful is it has tried to drive some of the decision-making down to the teachers on what the best techniques are to apply at the elementary levels. And the results actually are really good. They speak for themselves. If you look at um the scores for the targeted groups, uh the lowest improvement in reading levels was twenty-four percent of, and that's twenty-four percent of students in a targeted group achieving grade level in reading more than prior to the ESRI program. And so I would have to admit, if we're going to be doing, if if we want to focus on reading and literacy improvements at the middle school or the high school level, we should do the same thing. We should be talking to our specialists. We actually have reading specialists that work in our high schools and our middle schools. And we should be asking them, what else can we be doing to improve the literacy rates of our students? What else can we be doing to support these students? And so by supporting the specialists, the experts we have in the field, we can then make sure that we get the best possible results from our educational system.
Mr. Saltzman.
So I think the first step is understanding um, you know, what the requirements are, what the expectations are at each grade level. And so uh I agree with Chris in terms of looking to our specialists um to make sure that they're driving the conversation and the analysis in the in the appropriate direction. Um you know, we do need to make sure that our students have a strong foundation in basic mechanics uh of writing, um you know, from a literacy perspective. There are the basic building blocks of understanding language, you know, understanding phonics, phonemics, um you know, the building blocks of uh how you sound out words and and make sense of what you're reading. If students are struggling because they lack those uh building blocks, then we need we need to look at remedial solutions. Um if they're struggling because they uh have a learning disability, we need to make sure that we're identifying that as early as possible and, you know, providing interventions that will help. Um in some cases, I know that we have students who are struggling to uh read more complicated texts. Um and you know, that could come down to attention issues. So I think it's a very complicated um set of considerations, and that's why it's so important for us to work with our experts uh in in these areas and make sure that we're um developing solutions that will solve the problem that we're trying to solve and having metrics that are appropriate to um to track our uh progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chuang.
This is actually something I think about all the time and I've spoken at school board meetings about as I've attended the last, all the school board meetings for the last two and a half years, except for two that I watched on Zoom. And I've watched the last two years back and we talk about early literacy a lot. And what I've gone and stood up and talked about is exactly this, the fact that while it's wonderful that we're focusing on this and earlier is always where I'm thinking in terms of being preventative. And even with this initiative, there are students that didn't have Every Student Reads Initiative that are now in high school or in middle school. And even students that go through Every Student Reads, it's we're not at a hundred percent right now. And so those students will need continued support. I have spoken with our amazing reading specialists at all three of our middle schools. And um I'm I'm particularly focused on middle school and and getting them the support they need in middle school, even though I know the question asks about high school. And that's because I've recently become very concerned with uh ESL students that don't English second language, English language learning students that don't get out of that program by their freshman year. All of a sudden, their chance of making it to the English that would be required to go to UC, that chance is gone. And many of them are not aware that that will be what happens if they don't um get to the level in English they need to be at. So so again, always thinking younger and then thinking like, how do we catch those students that we don't get with the first pass in Every Student Reads? I think we need to dive in to middle school and I'm very encouraged to know that as long as we're identifying them and providing support, they can get there with the right instruction.
Ms. Kema.
So I think as a board member, um I would be looking to name this first, that reading is important, literacy is important at every level. Um and then really looking to our teachers and our staff to hear how we can better support um reading and literacy uh skills in at the high school level. Um this issue is near and dear to my heart. My mom is an English teacher, my dad is a reading specialist. I know that there's a lot of um uh science of reading and literacy that has developed a lot over the last several decades. Um and a lot of which has uh was the basis of Every Student Reads Initiative. Um but I'd be really working with those who are in the classroom to figure out what are the best solutions. But I can say, I say a couple of things that I would um look to uh um while still having a flexible approach um informed by input. One would be time, right? Making sure that we are really creating time for our students to read, um emphasizing that prioritizing reading. Um I would also uh be really looking at feedback. How is the way that we give feedback on our writing assignments and on our reading comprehension to make those so sure that students really at all levels um are getting the uh the critical feedback that they need um in order to enhance uh their skills? Um I I think putting all this together, we would also be looking at um why folks might be struggling um with literacy and trying to make sure that we're offering support and flexibility for students um and that there's some continuity um both uh at home and also over the summer so people can build on the skills um that they've learned. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chu.
Um as a humanities graduate who did her undergraduate and master's degrees in English literature, this is also a subject that's really dear to my heart. And I can think of a number of ways of improving literacy in um high schools. First, I think that we need to look at the choice of books uh on the curriculum to understand whether they are genuinely reflective of the complex world that we now live in, the diverse world that we now live in and representative of the cultures that we have here in Palo Alto. And I would include in that examination of the current curriculum, the idea that uh of an attractive format. I know that um uh comic books are now being used much more to encourage uh basic literacy skills in middle school, and I would encourage this in high school as well. I would say that we uh should move towards a creative use of writing that is applicable and exciting. We want to move away from the idea of reading and writing as a necessary basic skill to navigate the world and think about it more as a creative opening of worlds of imagination. So for example, um we can do courses around what is it like being a literary critic? What is it like to be a journalist? What is it like to be a food critic? Uh what is it like to write scripts for video games? So that we can use reading and writing, we can elevate it above this basic skill to use it in a way that excites and informs and uh opens worlds of creativity. I would suggest along with this, lowering the use of technology and the emphasis on writing, oh sorry, on typing and moving back towards a world where a pen and paper is being used as a way of stimulating uh creativity. And finally, I would suggest an emphasis, okay, sorry, I'm going to run out of time for the rest of it. Thank you very much.
For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Saltzman. Latina students make up about one-third of PUSD's special education population and Asian students make up over twenty percent. Both groups can face unique challenges, including language barriers for non-English speaking families and cultural differences in understanding disabilities. How would you ensure that these families are fully supported through translation services or culturally responsive resources to actively participate in their child's IEP process and advocate for their needs? Mr. Saltzman.
Uh this is really an important issue because as I alluded to before, if parents um aren't involved and don't understand uh and and can't be uh partners in helping their students with special needs, then I I think, you know, we um w- we it's going to be that much harder uh for that student to be successful. So we uh as a school district have to make sure that we're providing the resources necessary to bring our parents on board. And if those resources uh involve, you know, culturally aware uh literature, if they involve translation services, um then we've got to make sure we're providing those. I uh also believe that um that the law that relates to uh IEPs um requires the translation services be provided um for for families that need them. And so this really shouldn't be a a matter of debate. Um it's just making sure that it happens. So that to me is something um that gets back to something we've talked about a a few times here, which is making sure that we have uh reporting requirements and and um pathways established. Uh making sure that we're keeping track of these things because um the, you know, we have to make sure that uh, like I said, our our parents, our families have the resources they need um based on their um ethnicity, their language, uh and and so that those kids can be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kema.
This is something I think a lot about um as uh an immigration attorney. Um one of the biggest things is that our um foreign-born um uh parents, unless they've gone through the incredibly onerous process of naturalizing, uh which there are a lot of obstacles and I write and teach and think about this all day, can't actually vote in this election, right? So I think we need to make sure that we are incorporating folks' voices um in many different ways. And I'll add another piece to this, that our students who are coming from East Palo Alto, their parents also can't vote in this election, even though um their kids are in this district. So how are we going to be nevertheless um including uh uh the parents um uh and their students in accessible and transparent ways? Um I think there are a lot of low hanging fruit, so I think language access is one of them, making sure there are translators at board meetings. I think that making sure all of our um materials uh are translated. Um uh my son is in Spanish immersion program, so certainly the, and I know there's a Mandarin immersion uh program as well. There's certainly um some languages where there's more access to, but we have a a diversity of folks here um at Escondido. Uh there are folks who are speaking thirty-five different languages at home, so we have a long way to go. Um I would also really think about parent education um to make sure that we are helping folks navigate a a fairly complicated and bureaucratic system and offering liaisons where we can um to help make that process easier uh for folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kohan.
So there actually are two parts to this question. One is, you know, are we providing translation services where are required? And I'm one of the uh minority of non of non-lawyers on this panel. But um my understanding is that that Josh is correct, that they are legally required at IEP meetings. And I'm, I hope that we're actually meeting that obligation. Um and I do agree that where we can provide translators at further events would be fantastic. At board meetings, we should probably have translators as well. Um I know we have translators on this call right now, and I just want to say thank you so much to the two of you who are providing translations as we speak. Um in terms of how the district works to reach out to these families, we actually have a team assigned to do that called the Family Engagement Specialists. And as a PTA leader, I've had to work with them extensively to make sure that our PTA events are effectively communicated to our parents. And when I've worked with them, they've been absolutely wonderful. Um but the problem that I've had over the years is often they um they change jobs or they're overwhelmed. Or it's basically, this is the team that is hard to keep fully staffed. And we need to figure out why that's happening. We need to figure out how to improve that so that our parents, when they work with their family engagement specialists, have a clear, consistent voice over time because that consistency can really improve their experience and their knowledge of what they can expect or not expect from the district in terms of services.
Ms. Chuang.
This is exactly the work that I do in my professional life, leading dream catchers, as well as in my volunteer life as the co-president of the Chinese Parents Club. And I do this in partnership with the district. So in the Chinese Parents Club, every year, we have a new families orientation to the district that is provided for our Mandarin-speaking families, where we partner with our wonderful SAFE student and family engagement specialist, Qing Min, who has been in the district for something like thirty years and had her own children go through the district and she understands our family. And she comes and talks the nuts and bolts of how to be a parent in this district, including literally what to click on in Schoology. Because I just went through a Schoology training with my staff today to help us understand how to use Schoology. It's confusing. It's not intuitive. So we do that. We make sure that every time that we have parent education, it is translated and there are options. Um professionally with Dreamcatchers, we make sure that all of our community events and our parent education that we are translating. We work with student services, shout out to Amanda Boyce, our director of student services, who do us, does a great job ensuring that we get access to translators so that our parents can understand it in their native language, where even if they can't speak English, it's not always their preferred language or the language they're most comfortable expressing themselves in. So we make sure that our community events, our parent education, um at which we do talk about I intro to IEPs. And what does that even mean and what services are available? We work with our safes. We have a great team. We just need to make sure that it's being utilized. And we definitely need to translate our school board meetings because that is one error we're falling down.
Ms. Chu. Ms Chu.
Thank you for the question. I I agree with my fellow candidates that translation services um are not only a legal requirement, but we might consider them low-hanging fruit. However, in my experience as a PTA president, where I negotiated for translation services for marginalized uh um communities within my school community, I actually found a a lot of uh gaps and holes in this area. Um, for example, I think that it is relatively easy to find translation services for major world languages such as Mandarin or Spanish. But when I was asked to find a Vietnamese translator, it was actually much more difficult to do that, both in terms of availability and in terms of uh some question about who was responsible for the budget for that. Uh, similarly, uh in representation of the uh uh hearing loss family within our district, uh within our school community, uh when it came down to looking for a translator for that situation um for an for an essential school event. Uh, again, it was very difficult both to find the availability and to determine who was responsible for the budget for hiring someone. Um, so I'd say that uh our translation services, whilst they are low-hanging fruit, also require a bit of work. I would say that the long-term um investment, however, is in terms of this interesting question around um cultural response responsive uh responsive resources to um uh families to advocate for their child's IEP. I think that is a really complex subject. I think it requires a deep and sustained outreach into the community, consultation with community leaders, and also actually understanding the specific individual needs of the family in question. Thank you.
Thank you all for your responses. We'll be moving on to the next question. This one will begin with Ms Chu Wang. In two thousand and twenty-four, the Office for Civil Rights, the OCR, released fact sheets on medical conditions like asthma, epilepsy, diabetes, food allergies, and more, along with updates to Section five oh four. Schools are required to provide accommodations for students with disabilities and protect them from discrimination on their metal con on their medical conditions or other disabilities. As a board member, how would you ensure that PAUSD complies with these obligations, including providing necessary accommodations and responding appropriately to incidents of disability-based discrimination? Once again, we're beginning with Ms Chu Wang.
Thank you. I think, again, this question strikes at the heart of governance and how do we ensure compliance with the law, which is a requirement and one of the top priorities of the school board, as well as making sure that we're rolling all requirements out. Um, one of I think the most difficult things in addressing this is the fact that um education and awareness over what is available and what parents and students have a right to. And so certainly we need to make sure, I I've been told by many that are and and I say this um and realize that the task of our webmaster, who I have met and worked with when I worked on the uh Ed Community Ad Hoc Committee for uh Parent Communication, it's a hard job. There is a lot of stuff, information that's on our website, and so I don't think it's an easy task. But I have spoken to a lot of parents that feel that this information is hard to find. And you have to know you can even go looking for it. Many struggle in silence. And so I think we have to do more to get this information out there. We have great communication channels through PTAs and our safes that we were just speaking about. We need to make sure parents understand what their rights are, and then we need to make sure we're monitoring. Um, one thing I'm particularly concerned about is the timeline, and there are very specific guidelines around the amount of time that we're allowed to take as a district to go through all these processes. And I'm worried that we're not always meeting those timelines. And the reason they're so important is because this is how we're going to ultimately make education accessible for these students. So that would be a top priority is watching those timelines.
Thank you. Next is Ms Chu. I believe you're on mute.
Sorry. As a parent of a child on a five oh four with both uh learning differences and uh physical disabilities in terms of food allergies and so on, um, I think um I I think it is uh return to my previous answer about the idea of uh there being greater education within the school community, both among administrators and teachers about uh legal compliance with the five oh four. I find that even when uh in situations where uh something is legally uh required through either an IEP or a five oh four, I actually think that cultural education uh within the school community uh is a softer factor to um fully integrate uh the accommodations that are built into the five oh four or the IEP into uh that student's everyday school life. So I think um it this splits into technically are we meeting the letter of the law? And more broadly, are we meeting the spirit of the law? Um, I I would say that on the issue of uh food allergies, um, I I my observation is that the student himself or herself is often uh tasked with the responsibility of navigating that, um especially at the middle and high school levels. Whereas in elementary, uh that was sort of hand-fed to them in in the sense that the campus was kept, say, nut-free. In middle and high school, uh I don't believe that accommodations are made for children with uh asthma or food allergies or or diabetes. And indeed, that the ch the student themselves is responsible for their own medical condition, and I find that to be uh problematic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next quote. Next is Mr. Saltzman.
So to me, there's um two parts here, and the first is making sure that we, and by we, I mean everyone involved in PAUSD understands what our responsibility is, what our obligations are under this law. So part of that is around professional development, uh making sure that site principals and teachers and classroom aides, all the adults that are involved um understand the information here in terms of who qualifies um for accommodations um and what types of accommodations are we uh expected to provide to those students. So then, assuming that we um have addressed that issue, the next question is, how do we know if those accommodations aren't being provided? And that's where I think things get a little bit trickier, because we have to keep in mind that in some cases um things may be under-reported because students or their parents um may feel uncomfortable reporting uh information. They may feel that they uh might be retaliated against. And so this really goes to one of my priorities around trust um and making sure that we uh are building trust with our community, making sure that parents um and students feel that they have a way of uh reporting incidents that occur um that don't conform with the requirements. Uh, and so that we have then a way of following up on those incidents and um and trying to improve. Uh, and and that comes down to governance. So um, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms Kamai.
Um, so as an attorney that works in an adjacent field to um disability rights, I know that this is uh an area of ever-evolving law and policy. And so what I think these fact sheets are great, but I think that um we need to do more to make sure that folks understand um how they're updated. Um, yeah, what the updated sections are to five oh four. Um, and I'm gonna go off the principle that generally I think people want to follow the law. So making sure that we are providing all of the support and resources we can um across the district, so to our district staff um as well as to our teachers, um to our aides, uh to workers employed throughout the district um to make sure that folks know what these updates are, why they were made, how this changes, um what what effects uh this might have in the classroom. Um, and and on the flip side, um to make sure that we're responding appropriately, I mean, here too, um, I think that education can do a really big piece of this. I believe that we are uh in a district where people are really trying to and care deeply about our students and trying to assist folks in all the ways that they can. Um, so making sure that we are uh really trying to be preventative and where there are incidents, that we are responding with education um and uh making sure that folks are able to uh to course-correct going forward and get the support that they need to make sure that the burden doesn't fall on um our students uh to correct or to monitor um these policies themselves. Thanks.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Kohan.
It's hard to add to what the other candidates have already said. There basically are three things we need to worry about here. One is the training of our principals and teachers, making sure that they're aware of the requirements, especially the requirements of the five oh fours, and that they're actually following them. Um, the second thing is responding to incidents. Unfortunately, as I've mentioned already, we have a very talented uh attorney on staff at the district, Robert Andrade, who's in charge of all of our compliance efforts and including uh in charge of our universal complaint process and responding to incidents and making sure that not only are they documented, but they're well responded to. And he has earned a lot of trust amongst the folks who have worked with him. And um he's very good at it. I hope he continues to earn that trust. And I, one of the goals that we actually have in our SWIFT plan is to increase the amount of trust that people have in this uh in this complaint process and get more reports so that we learn about more things. So hopefully we're able to do that. And then the third is the compliance aspect, which has already been mentioned, and Robert is also in charge of making sure that that is done correctly. And he regularly reports to the board so that the board can verify that the compliance aspects are in place.
Okay, thank you. This next question, we'll start with Ms Chu. The question is, the term twice exceptional or two E student represents the PAUSD-designated group of students who are considered gifted while also experiencing challenges to their learning. These students are fully able to excel, but at times find that their disabilities can create significant barriers to reaching their full academic potential. As a board member, how would you ensure that our schools recognize and support the strengths of students in the district designated two E group, addressing their unique challenges so that they can receive appropriate accommodations and opportunities to thrive?
Thanks for this question. Um, this is uh both a very personal question to me and also incredibly difficult to answer. Um, I think I would say uh I'm a parent of a child that was diagnosed twice exceptional at the age of three, and I've been advocating her for her for the last twelve years. Um, I would actually say that I think that the district um currently does not do uh a good job at all of serving this particular subsection of students. I think that there has been a move away from being willing to discuss giftedness as an issue. Um, it is often misunderstood as some as uh stemming from uh arrogance and bragging uh rather than being uh considered to be a um an issue that uh hampers the student from reaching their full potential, as a question stem would um answer. So I would say that the um very first um step that we must take is um can we now be intellectually honest about what it means to be twice exceptional and or gifted? And and to what extent does that hinder a student in terms of fulfilling their full potential, as I I find that it often does? Secondly, uh, once we are intellectually honest about that, what actual practical supports are we willing to provide? Uh, during twelve years of advocating for my two E child, I find often that the provisions granted to her through five oh fours or otherwise classroom accommodations, uh I must say, barely scratch the surface of what she needs. Um, she often needs much more practical support in terms of executive functioning and areas like that. Um, and I feel
Thank you. Next, Ms Kamai.
This goes to two of my campaign priorities. Um, one is academic opportunities for all. And so I've talked uh earlier about making sure that we are supporting uh struggling students, challenging our advanced kids. But this also includes making sure that our two E students have the supports across the board um that uh that 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 they need. Um, I also think that this goes to uh safety, so making sure that kids feel like they belong in school, um that there's visibility for the different ways and um that people learn, um the different ways that people can find success. Um, we're fortunate to have uh an incredible diversity of courses option as a courses offers. I think it's important to just kind of socialize the different pathways to success and the different ways that people may even approach the same homework assignment based on the different ways that different people learn and the different support services um that folks need. So I think this comes down to some of what I've talked about um in earlier answers. So really making sure that we are doing parent education, that we are listening from the students and families themselves about different off uh different options that we could continue to add to what we already have. Um, as uh an elected official, I would want to be responsive to the needs of the constituents and really opening up dialogue to figure out how we can um uh how our schools can recognize and support the strengths of these students um and also address uh address those challenges. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Ms Chu Wang.
We're really fortunate to have an amazing education nonprofit in Pat based in Palo Alto called Real Two E, where I've been fortunate to go to trainings. That's actually where I learned about strength-based IEPs. Um, it's where I've done neurodiversity simulations to understand what it might feel like to be in a classroom as a neurodiverse student. And I was recently talking with one of their founders about how students that are two twice exceptional two E oftentimes have an intense interest in a specific subject and therefore want to accelerate because because that's what they they need in order to feel that um that their education is is meeting their learning needs and along with the strong social emotional component within that. And so I think it it comes down to making sure that our opportunities where we have, like I spoke about earlier with through foothill or through other means, um are not dependent on a family socioeconomic status. Because being two E or being a student with special needs or neurodiverse cuts across all social lines and all racial and ethnic lines, and i it's not concentrated on one group. So we have to make sure that those opportunities are available to all of our students, regardless of what their personal family status is, to be able to pay for accelerated classes. So I'm particularly um hopeful because we do have an amazing program. And in fact, we also have Middle College, which is a great resource in a way that students that I've talked to students that go there specifically because they know that they're interested in one line of study, and that's where they're going to be able to do that.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Kohan.
So one of the difficult parts of this question is every child is so unique. And so we really need to make sure that we have the ability to cater to a wide variety of unique children and their needs. And that's a place where our district has the opportunity to excel, because we have so many resources and so many programs and so many diverse ways which students pathways which students can go through our schools, especially at the high school level. Um, as Nicole already mentioned, the uh middle college is one opportunity for students who wish to have a more college-like environment as they pro progress through their high school. Um, we also have acceleration programs in our high school, for example, the ability to skip a math class if you test out of it and learn the material elsewhere, for example. Um, but one of the problems I think we have in our district is is we have all these opportunities, but we don't necessarily have super clear documentation about how to explore all of these opportunities. And so often, um, people learn about them by being socially connected, by understanding, by knowing other parents who know how to work the system, and therefore they learn how to work the system. And so one of the things I would like to do is make sure that that's not the dominant factor in access to the various pathways and opportunities available to our students. But instead, that we have really clear documentation about what's available, how to get access to those things, and um and and how how to how to take advantage of the great stuff we already have.
Thank you. Last, Mr. Saltzman.
Um, one of the issues that I've heard about from parents of twice exceptional uh students is that um because of uh misunderstandings, I think, among a lot of folks about what uh neurodiversity looks like. Um, there's an idea that if you have uh like a learning difference, that you're likely to struggle um in terms of, you know, like needing extra support. And so the the way that this becomes a problem is if we have uh teachers who are teaching advanced courses and haven't had professional development to help them understand uh neurodiversity, then they may assume if they have a student that's in their course, because that's the appropriate academic level for the student. Um, but then that student is uh exhibiting behavioral challenges or other issues that relate to uh their uh the way in which they're neurodivergent. Um, that that student is uh is sort of choosing to be disruptive or uh, you know, is causing problems um for some some other reason. And and so that becomes a a real issue for those students. And so I think one of the most important things we need to do is um make sure that we're uh creating opportunities for professional development among our teachers, especially in some of our advanced courses, to make sure that they understand the needs of um this particular type of student, because they are a unique set of needs. Thank you.
Thank you. For the final question in the ninety sec ninety-second section, we begin with Ms Kamai. A long-term English learner, LTL, is a student in grade six through twelve who has been enrolled in US schools for six or more years without achieving full English proficiency. With seven point four percent of PAUSD's one thousand and thirty-four English learners classified as LTLs, most of whom are Spanish-speaking, and a goal to reduce this rate to five point five percent by two thousand and twenty-six through two thousand and twenty-seven, what strategies would you advocate to support timely language proficiency for middle school English learners, starting with Ms Kamai?
Um, so I I I think that we are incredibly fortunate here to have a lot of resources um and to have a um and to have a plan um that really addresses uh how to to increase um English proficiency for our students that fall into this category. So I think one of the things we need to do is have a consistent um and cohesive approach uh across um across the high school. Uh, so making sure um that we are providing support uh in all of the classes um for folks that may be struggling uh with English language. Um, I think that we uh can take more advantage of different kinds of tutoring programs. I think we can do more peer-to-peer tutoring. Um, I think that uh we could be um really supporting stuff outside of the classroom as well. I think we can be doing parent education. Um, and I think really hearing again from our families, from our teachers and from our staff and ways in which that we can uh continue to be supportive um for uh for this population. Um, I uh was seven point four percent. Um, that um is a high number. Um, however, I think that it's an achievable goal to reduce it to five point five percent. I think focusing on it right now and having this plan is one's real step in the right direction um to making sure that we are uh calling attention to the students that need this extra support and thinking creatively about ways to serve them.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Saltzman.
Um, I think understanding these numbers in more detail would be a good first step. Uh, one of the things that I would be interested to know is what proportion of um these students are in the uh upper level, uh upper grade levels? I mean, we know that uh learning um language, gaining language proficiency becomes harder as we get older. And so I think, you know, we need to make sure that we're setting achievable goals um and that we're setting the right goals. And so you know, to me, it's very important to understand um what are the reasons why the students aren't being successful? Um, i- is that uh a metric that is important for us to focus on? Meaning, is it actually causing them problems um in other areas of their learning? Um, is it likely to cause them a problem uh throughout their life? Or you know, have we just decided that it's important for them to become um equivalent to native speakers? Um, so that to me is uh is important. If if in fact, um, you know, these learners are uh being held back by their um their struggles with learning English, then I think we need to target, um, you know, we need to target uh strategies to support them um in a a variety of different ways, some of which other candidates have mentioned in terms of tutoring. I think there are also uh technology solutions that could be very useful um and making sure that we're giving them every opportunity we can to help them uh achieve that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms Chu Wang.
This is actually a concern I mentioned earlier on the forum where I spoke about how um if if our English language learners are not at grade level and and able to proceed uh during their freshman year, then therefore their um options in terms of going to U C, for example, are are closed off. And so when we think about this, I think uh back again to, I know many of the EL teachers at our middle schools and I know that they're doing their best. And then when I think about with the and they could always use more support and for us to lean into them guiding the way because they know their students best and they know what they don't have enough time in the day to do right now and what they would want to do if they had more time and resources and support. And so I think back to what the role of the board is, and the role of the board is not for me to advocate for particular strategies for us to get these students where they need to be. Um, but rather for me to help set goals and help ensure that our teachers and our staff and predominantly our teachers that are the experts in this in the classroom have the resources and support and space and pay to be able to do what they need to do to achieve these results for our students. So that's what I would focus on a board member rather than advocating specific strategies. I would trust our teachers who are already doing this work and say, how can we help? How can we make your job more effective? And um and I would give them the time to be able to devote some of their working time to conquer this problem and make it a stated goal, much like we made every student reads initiative, because I think really the main learning there is when you focus on it, you can achieve it.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Kohlhan.
Oh.
I believe it's Ms Chu's turn.
Oh, apologies. Miss read the script. Um, Ms Chu.
Thank you. Um, so I was someone who, as an elementary school student, actually caused a lot of concern because I was very slow to learn English. Um, and so I want to speak a little bit about a lived experience in this regard. Um, I would say that as a young elementary school student who took a number of years to start speaking in English, um, a lot of pressure was applied to the idea that I either academically or intellectually was capable, was incapable of picking up English. When actually the reasons why I didn't speak English were more to do with uh cultural and societal issues, namely that I wasn't speaking English at home, that I was incredibly shy, that I didn't have any friends of my own uh to speak in English with. And so I literally practically wasn't picking up time speaking English. I was only really speaking to my parents at home, my siblings at home, for which I use Cantonese. So the reason why I tell this story is I think there needs to be holistic approach to uh why uh long-term English learners aren't picking uh up English at the speed at which we think. I think the story is often more complicated than uh, you know, uh academic or uh intellectual hindrance. I think we should um consider uh eh uh the background of of whether they are able to use English much outside of school life. Um, in addition to tutoring and the other solutions that candidates have proposed, uh I would suggest a buddy system because I feel that in the end, the re- the what accelerated me in terms of learning English is finally finding friendships and using the language on a more casual basis rather than s- simply in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, i- it is actually Mr. Kohlhan.
And we got a nice musical soundtrack with that. Uh, sweet. Uh, so, um. First things first, I'm not an expert in this area. I I I know very little about English learning. And so the first thing my intuition is, I go and talk to the experts. We have English language teachers in our schools. I go to ask them, are these goals achievable? How can we achieve them? But from a board perspective, I I point, want to point out that in this forum, the thing I'm dying to do, which the rules don't let me do, is I want to go and Google, where the heck did this stat come from? Um, and and this goal come from? And the reason I ask is because I just flipped through the entire SWIFT plan and I don't see it in there, which makes me wonder, do I have an outdated version of the SWIFT plan in front of me? Is this not in some other plan which I'm not looking at right now? And so as a board, we need to make sure that when we have our goals, they're easy to find, they're well indexed, they're they're, you know, they're they're clear to everyone so that everyone knows what's expected of them and how we're going to achieve those goals and how we're going to grade those goals. And so, um, I could just be showing my ignorance right now, or it could be that I've got some bad docs. But I think it's an important thing for us to do is to make sure that this information is easily accessible to everyone so that we can actually all agree on what directions and what our priorities are as a district.
Thank you. For the next questioning segment, we will have sixty-second answers for the remaining questions today. And we'll begin with Ms Chu. PAUSD's AI integration efforts, including a short-term committee, the generative AI guidance committee, and the AI Now Program for Educators, aim to enhance learning while upholding academic integrity. For students with disabilities, technology specified in their IEP must be used to support their learning. What is your vision for integrating assistive technology to improve educational access and functional capabilities for students with disabilities and diverse learners? Ms Chu.
Thank you for this question. Um, I for one, I'm very optimistic about the use of AI in classrooms um because I have seen some pilot programs that I have directly worked with out in Africa and Asia that have transformed classroom space uh when there has been a need for further resources or perhaps one-on-one uh side-by-side tutoring uh for facilitators in the classroom. I think that M-AI expands a situation where there is a a desperate need for sort of human resources or rather than that is scarce. And I'd say it does it in this way. Um, I find that AI can often be used to replace the actual uh functional teaching element. So the sort of lecturing element uh that a a teacher would uh uh use their skills to impart actual content. And so a teacher, instead of teaching, can become much more of a facilitator. So um how this would work in a neurodiverse setting is often neurodiverse kids uh by definition uh are different in the sense that they need uh more one-on-one attention. And so I believe AI would be able to uh provide them with this. Sorry that my time is.
Thank you. Ms Chu Wang.
In terms of the ability of AI to help assistive technology and um and support our neurodiverse students, that's actually what I'm most excited about with AI, that and supporting our teachers to be able to teach more effectively, efficiently, and successfully, and to uh make the job of a teacher, which is so hard, just a little less difficult. So I'm encouraged by the committee that is formed in which we've invited educators to lead it, much like language, um, much like IL leaders would, for example. We invited two from each elementary school, three from each middle, and five from each high school to participate. And I think the role of the board is not for us to say exactly how we should do this because we aren't experts in this. Um, even though many board members over time, including myself, have been um come from tech companies and so maybe have a little bit better understanding when we talk about this type of thing and and a personal interest around implementing it. Um, it's not our job for us to decide how it gets implemented. So I'm encouraged and I think as the board, we should be supporting this committee.
Mr. Kohlhan.
When I finished my PhD, I went and I joined a small startup called Google. And over my time there, I noticed that there are so many ways in which we found new techniques for using computers as an aid for the brain to make the brain more effective. These days, everyone just naturally thinks of web search, like in the last question where darn it, I wanted to use web search in order to actually properly answer that question. Um, and there's so many other technologies that we use every day on our on our phones, which I'm not looking at right now because the rules don't let me look at. Um, but you know, and we we rely on these things. And AI is another technique, ano- another set of technologies, which is an aid to the brain. It allows us to leverage our brain to do new and creative things, both for um bo- both for people with and without disabilities. And so I'm excited to see how we can use this in the classroom in all sorts of ways. And I'm excited to hear from our teachers, what tends to work, what doesn't work, and where do we need actual policy setting at the board level?
Mr. Saltzman.
So um I have a a child who is um very interested in a variety of uh sort of arcane uh topics at times. Um, and I have found that uh AI is actually quite useful at um answering questions that would be incredibly repetitive for me to keep looking up uh using Google. Um, and so I actually think that uh as other candidates have said, I think there's a tremendous um potential for AI to um, you you know, to sort of serve as a learning partner uh maybe for um many of our students. I think we do need to make sure that we're setting uh policies that relate to um academic honesty. Um, that's something that's very important, but I don't think that we should uh be too quick to write off technologies without exploring the potential. And I I definitely want to look to our experts, uh look to our teachers for what type of resources they think would be most helpful in the classroom and make sure we're supporting them and making those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms Camai.
I think there are two different tensions that we I would be working to navigate as a board member to set guidance. One is the tension between flexibility and consistency with us. So making sure that our teachers have the flexibility to um really explore uh new um AI uh efforts and really allow that to help our our students. But while offering some sort of consistencies that our students are having, um, our students who are benefiting from these services can access them in different classrooms and across time and different years. Um, another tension that would be exploring is the excitement about new technologies with the wariness towards not just including technology for technology's sake and making sure that we are um uh really examining uh the benefits um of what the technologies have to offer while also being aware that time in front of a screen is also time not with a person and making sure that we're not um undermining the very real relationships with peers and teachers that are so important to academic and emotional health as well.
Thank you. For our next question, we will begin with Ms Chu Wang. After-school care for TK through sixth grade and various after-school programs and or extracurricular programs are often available through PAUSD elementary and secondary school sites. After-school programs are very important for building students' social skills, character, and providing supplemental support. How would you ensure that these programs are inclusive and accessible for students with disabilities if they're offered to their non-disabled peers? Ms Chu Wang.
Thank you for this question. It's it's something that I think about all the time, running an after-school program for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in our district. And um my student part- my own child participates in an after-school program. Um, and I think all the time about how can we as an after-care provider be staffed up and able to support these students? I've been encouraged to learn that although technically uh student with disabilities may have different um rights to access of from aides, for example, after school than they do during the school day, that our district is always trying to do the right thing. And we'll look at whether they can provide an aid programmatically, for example, to support those students and figure out what that looks like, as well as working with the after-care provider to and the parent to gain access to IEPs and five oh fours to understand how the after-care provider can be prepared to support that student. But ultimately, the most important thing is that that student is able to be supported.
Thank you. Mr. Kohlhan.
This is a an interesting question because I've, to admit, it's not something I've ever had a chance to cha- chance to think about. And so just on the spot, like I'm thinking, we have, we have after-care providers on campus such as PACC, such as Right at School. And I've not looked into the regulations that govern them and what supports they're required to provide versus what our district is required to provide. And I also haven't looked into what supports uh the various, the many extracurricular programs we have available at our school, both offered on campus and off campus by third-party providers and also by our schools. So I'd have to dig into this and actually find out what what can the district do to support these things, to encourage these things? Um, and I I I think it's a fascinating question. I just don't have an answer at this time.
Thank you. Ms Camai.
So this is how I first started getting involved in the district. Um, two years ago, uh, there was a district decision to close fourth and fifth grade um programs, after-care programs at uh across all of our elementary school sites. As an impacted family, I started going to school board meetings, um, started advocating with Escondido parents, other schools, um, ended up applying, was one of just a couple of parents on the ad hoc school board committee. Um, it, I learned that that effort was in order to provide um after-care for low-income English as a second language foster care youth. What we did, we made the pie bigger. Not only did we not close after-care programs for those students, we um expanded options and we added special needs, which was not required by the state law. Um, and so I think in doing that, we show that we actually can and should be providing after-care options um for all of our students um in the most inclusive way possible. There was a real recognition there that not all learning happens with within the bells and that we need to be providing spaces for folks to be doing homework um and to be provide and to be getting extra care. Um, so I look forward to exploring that further. Also, I'm a PAC board member.
Um, so first I I'd like to address the question of after-school care, if I may. I have a minute to do that. Okay, thank you very much. Um, I do believe in the broad principle, of course, that after-school care should be both inclusive and accessible for students with disabilities. And this was very much part of my platform that I advocated for uh in the case of a loney room nineteen. Um, however, I do acknowledge that sometimes practically speaking, inclusivity and access- accessibility can sometimes uh work against one another. So in other words, uh, I think that uh inclusivity is very important for mild-to-mod students uh who could be with their uh neurotypical uh classmates without the need for uh aides after cl- after school. But um in the case of moderate-severe students who require a full-time aide, I think that issue becomes much more complicated. And so I think a practical solution is really to look at supply and demand and try and consider whether or not uh we can integrate some of these classrooms uh with uh mod severe needs, uh after-school support for mod severe students uh in one classroom rather than separated out among many classrooms. And in order to make that equitable, they would need transportation, of course. Thank you.
Mr. Saltzman.
Um, this is a really interesting question and one that I'm not sure very many people have considered. Um, but I have definitely uh encountered this very issue. And one of the reasons why is because um many of the programs that uh currently exist at our school sites for after-school uh programs um don't allow uh third-party um providers to come in um and help out with uh students who are participating. So um that presents a a real barrier for students who um require behavioral support uh to be able to participate in those programs. Um, in some cases, it makes it completely impossible. And so the question is, uh, you know, are there providers out there that um, you know, where we could work with them uh to provide? uh to provide accommodations for these students? Um, I would want to make sure that that was feasible before setting it as a standard. But I think if it is possible, then I think as a board, we could set it as a policy that those providers need to allow uh some form of accommodations for students with special needs. Thank you.
We're we're running out of time, so we're going to move on to the closing statements at this point. And that'll be in the reverse order of your openings. Chris? Uh, yeah. Every candidate make a one-minute-long closing statement. The first will be Miss Kamai.
I just want to thank you guys again um for having us here today. So um I am running for school board um as an extension of really a lifetime of service. Um, started working with youth in high school, uh working for the National Conference of Christians and Jews, which became the National Conference of Communion Justice, working on issues of inclusion and and belonging. Um, then uh was a counselor there, then an employee there. Um, and then uh after college, went and got a full right to go to former East Germany to study the rise of neo-Nazism um and the increase of hate crimes there. Um, I uh then came back, went to Harvard Law School, and have dedicated my career to um social and racial justice. Um, and really want to bring a lot of um that passion, that experience uh to work on the board to make sure that truly all of our students um are being served by the district, are being listened to, uh that our families feel included, um and that we are having ongoing a dialogue about how to continue to improve our experience for everyone. Thank you.
Miss Chu Wang.
I'm so grateful to all the organizers for this forum. And I think all the groups that are involved in planning this forum, as well as all the parents that submitted questions, because I've seen some of these questions before, so I know they're coming from parents and active people within the community, speaks to how committed we are as a district and a community to equity. And when I ran in twenty twenty-two, I lost, and what I gained was so much more, because I started forming these relationships. I learned the work that was being done already and the ways that we need to support the work that is already being done and not spin up new things when there's already initiatives that just need to be uplifted and to be supported and to be given time and resources. And so when I lost, I decided to do the work, because you don't have to be elected to do the work. And that's what I've been doing, and that's what I've been talking about during this forum, the ways that I have dug in to do the work to support our students that have been historically marginalized. Thank you.
Mr. Saltzman.
Um, I just want to say thank you to the moderators, um organizers, and to everyone who's watching. Um, the board's job is to guide our schools into the future and uh help shape our district's culture. And come December, uh we will have three brand-new members on the board. And the perspectives and experience that those board members bring to the table will inform their decision-making. As a parent of three very different kids who span elementary, middle, and high school, including a child with special needs, I have personal experience with many of the issues we face. As a longtime volunteer in our schools and on P T A boards, including in roles that require financial governance, I've shown I can work collaboratively with anyone. And as a product designer and entrepreneur, creative problem solving and analysis are second nature to me. I hope you'll give me a chance to represent our community by voting for me na- between now and November fifth. Thank you.
Miss Chu.
Thank you to the organizing committee, or my fellow candidates, and also those who are dialing in for this opportunity to talk about such an important topic as equity with a focus on uh students with disabilities and special needs. Um, as someone who has dedicated her whole career to advocating for those that are marginalized, whether it's uh the world's bottom billion through the World Bank, or whether it is uh women at risk of sexual assaults through the Me Too movement, or as a P T A president advocating for a loney room nineteen parents, I feel that a a special affinity to discuss uh this subject. Um, as a candidate and hopefully as a future board member, I hope to continue my priority to center the voices of those who consider themselves underrepresented, uh diminished, or marginalized. I think that we are a much richer society if we can bring uh diverse voices to the table and genuinely listen to perspectives that are different from our own. And I hope to bring this principle to the board if I am voted in. I encourage you all to vote and participate in this important democratic process. Thank you.
Mr. Colahan.
I'll wait for the music to stop. Okay. Uh, so once, like everyone else, I want to say thank you to everyone for sticking it out through this entire thing, and also to our hosts for running a very interesting and very educational forum. Uh, quite honestly, uh many of the questions, my answer is, I want to learn more about that topic, because it's something which I've not encountered before, and I want to learn more from the experts we have in the district, and I want to learn more from our parents. And this just comes from a law, a whole lifetime of wanting to learn everything about anything. That's why I stuck around in school through grade twenty-six and got my PhD. It's why one of my main goals in my campaign is to make our district a place where all children learn to love learning, because I want them to have the same passion that I do, as you know, a fellow geek. And and not only am I geek, but also I am a parent of two kids who are fourth-generation Paul Altons. I am an experienced P T A leader with over seven years on the P T A. I'm an experienced manager, hiring and firing people, leading high-performing teams at Google. And I'm also an experienced substitute teacher. I've been in the classrooms. And for all those reasons, I think I'd be a very good and very experienced board member.
Thank you, Mr. Colahan, and thank you to all of our candidates for participating in this meeting today. We're going to hand it back to Mr. Phil Pot for an ending statement.
Sorry, go a minute here. Uh, thank you, student moderators, for doing such a great job today. We appreciate all of the candidates for participating in our forum, and thanks to the community who have joined us. A recording will be available on the P-Tech website, W W O dot Paul Alto P T A dot org. Have a good afternoon.